Okay, so now we are at the stage where we are going to be approving the fiscal year 2015 budget request. And we have the fiscal year 15 operating budget. There will be an approval of submission to the city manager of the fiscal year 15 food service budget and approval of submission to the city manager of the fiscal year 15 community services budget. Sorry?
I guess I'm making a motion number 5B2 to approve for submission to the city manager the proposed 2014-2015 operating fund budget in the amount of $44,588, which requires the city appropriation of $36,716,000. And also the food service budget to approve.
We need to do them one at a time.
One at a time, okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And which, you know, you said B2, was that number one or number two?
No, he said five.
Five B.
B2, gotcha, thank you. B52. Block Lobster.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, should we open this up for discussion?
It's been sent.
Okay.
Yeah, I have discussion if no one else does. Yeah, I would urge us to put this one aside and go with either scenario three or four, preferably number three. There's several reasons. One is that I think you're undershooting what the city's capabilities are. The city has over the last several years, and I think it's innate instances to the credit of the council and the financial advisors that they've had, that they've been very careful about their projections. And very consistently, they've come up with large overruns, large surpluses, if you will, at the end of their budget cycle. And they've even now become so confident in having that that they're talking about moving the tax collection so that it goes back to a collection consistent with the fiscal year and that that's going to cost them several hundred thousands of dollars, but so what? There's also their, well, the consistent pattern of their surpluses has been in the plus $2 million range, sometimes more than that. And I think they're probably headed for at least that much again, although I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't be a betting person and say, "You're definitely going to have that." I'd be, I'd put it more in the $1 million range for purposes of our budgeting. The other factor is the water fund, the sale. They have now $16 million is the estimate of what the proceeds are from the water fund. At one time, it was as low as $10 million. So again, the conservative estimates are very, very good to start with, very prudent, but I think they are just what they are. They're very conservative and at the end of the day, they don't quite come out to where we thought they might. With the water fund in the past, there was a transfer that when the water system was operating, Lawrence may remember from some of his early years on the council, that there was roughly $2 to $3 million per year that went into the general operating fund as a return on investment from the water fund. Well, again, I think you could argue that the amount that's likely to be a benefit from the 16 million now that is expected from the water fund proceeds would be something in the order of $2 million on an annual basis. When they were talking about putting $11 million into the pension fund, they were getting roughly $1 million just that way. That was only $11 million. So again, I think their projections are very sound, but also generous. And they, as far as what is available for us to look at, again, I would suggest that these scenarios they provided to us are another $1 million short because of the water fund sale. And so, you know, the scenarios that they've provided where they're, where we may be because of our request, going into something like a nine cent tax increase. I think those are just not realistic because I think they will have that $2 million to deal with at the end of the day. And so I think I'm quite comfortable with three or four for that reason. I'm very uncomfortable with anything less on our side because we do have all these unfunded needs that Tony's put out there. And there are ones that we heard about in our public hearings and we heard about from our staff that we're not really in those unfunded needs, or at least they're not staff positions in those unfunded needs. I think we, when we look at the unfunded needs, the things we think most critically about are the ESOL staff members that aren't in the budget, the gifted items that aren't in the budget, the individual class teachers that aren't in the budget. But there are other things that also aren't there, including things like the 403B match is not there. And there are things that we used to do that we have changed because of the recession and we haven't put them back into gear coming out of the recession. Another one of those factors is fees for student activities. Prior to the recession, we didn't have any such fees. Now we do, and there's no discussion about potentially bringing them back in. And so these things, both on the city side, I think we're shorting what the city's capacity is. On our side, I think we're shorting our needs. And I don't, I'm not comfortable allowing for either of those to go by here without at least a discussion. And if this vote is defeated, I would then come back with a motion to adopt a budget that's more in the three or four scenario range rather than where we are right now. Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Sharp, you're rising in opposition. Are you making?
Yes, I oppose.
You're opposing, okay.
Let me carry on just a little bit more. The other two items in our work tonight are additional reasons why we're shorting ourselves. Both the food service and the community service fund have in them really top-notch products that we have, that really nobody else has, and that the city taxpayers are not paying for. They're coming out of the parents. And those two products are a food service that has won a national award and has paid for itself even despite some very difficult restrictions that are imposed from the federal level on what we can do with food service. And it has brought in enough money to pay for itself during all of that period. The other is daycare. And the daycare is something that we run almost entirely based on parent fees and very, very little money from the city. Other jurisdictions subsidize their daycare to a much greater extent, also very typically subsidize their food service. And we do not. And so I think we're not giving ourselves enough credit in our argument for going to the city, for being a much more efficient operation than many of our competing jurisdictions around us.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Mr. Webb, any thoughts? Shall we just go work down the line here?
Swing back around to me.
All right. Ms. Curtin.
Okay. I mean, I think this does a disservice to our students, especially in the elementary levels. You're taking away, you know, some specialists, which I don't think, you know, in any of the scenarios we're really looking at are realistic to be added in, but taking away teachers and increasing class sizes, especially with students who are so young and considering that as a possibility, I don't think that's effective. I don't think it's going to help our students learn, and I don't think that's a sustainable way for the school board to think, going in down the line and saying, "We can keep doing this and it'll be okay and we'll catch up next year." Well, we haven't really. So I don't think continuing down that line is smart.
Ms. Ward.
I'm on the same page as Karen and Maeve. I really don't feel comfortable with these five budgets, five A or B. And like Maeve said, I don't want to start a precedent that we can keep playing with, you know, teachers, hiring teachers and pushing the limits of our classroom, which I understand are already at the breaking point. And I'd like to keep those classroom sizes within our school policy. So I'm going to go back to my scenario three that I originally voted for. Thank you.
Mr. Nkuma.
I think the city council is faced with, again, the politics of the whole situation. Assessments are up, there's a stormwater fee, and there's a potential to increase the tax rate. So it's a bit hard for them to swallow politically. But the reality of it is, the kids are coming in. Nobody's making any effort to stop them coming in, but we're having to deal with them. And so the only way to deal with them is to teach them and teach them the only way we know how. Unless the city wants to have 30 kids per classroom or lower the standards or do otherwise or lose teachers, you know, I'm not sure what else we're being asked to do here. And so for me, like I said, the priorities are this year, teachers, small classroom sizes, and technology. We can argue as to how we rank those. Personally, I pay the teachers because I don't want them to leave. I'd rather, I'd sacrifice the technology if I had to and say, "I'd rather have the teachers there teaching the kids and sort of work around the technology and keep the classroom sizes small." But then that's my personal opinion. So until some effort is made to rein in the rate of growth of the kids, which nobody cares for on the other side, but we have to deal with, we're just going to have to let them know what it costs to deal with the kids, to deal with the increased growth. We're not the only one increasing our tax rate. Fairfax went up a percent. I guess it's not as much as we might have it, but they have a bigger tax base. That's not, that's just the demographics we're in. So does Arlington. They've got two-thirds business, one-third residential. And so it's not apples to apples. So yes, you hear the, you hear folks wanting to reduce the tax rate, but I'm not sure they understand the dynamics of the tax base, which is what drives some of this stuff. So for me, I would rather ask and be knocked back rather than retreat and still get knocked back. So, exactly, because that's what you, you know, if you back down, they'll back you down even more. And so for me, I'm willing to go up and defend what we've agreed and what Tony and are advocating for, which is, you know, if we can live with an 8.9 or 9%, I'll go for it. And I'm also going to argue that last year, we were told to reduce the rate of growth of the school budget. We've done that. It was 14.6% last year, we're 5% under this year. The kids are still coming, you know. I'm not sure what the city wants us, the city hall wants us to do under those circumstances. You're short of giving them the budget and saying, "You cut it down." So for me, I'm sticking with the 9%.
So just to be clear, Mr. Nkuma, you're in support of 5B2?
Exactly.
You are supporting your own proposal.
Yes, sorry.
You know, it's hard to, well, I can't really disagree with anything anybody said. We are doing less than we know we need, and under any scenario, we were going to do less than we need. I think the key, and you know, Amanda and Joel made that very clear, I think one of the keys is really pushing on salary and trying to get that going, even if it means we get some fewer teaching positions this year. You know, and going out and talking to people at the school, the fact that we're trying to do that and they know how hard it is means a lot. And I look at this as a continuum, and you know, Michael talked about last year, we got over 14%. This year, we're looking at nine. Next year, we're going to have even greater enrollment than this year. But we're also looking at, you know, $15 million for Mount Daniel within, what, a year. We're then, you know, certainly looking at $99 million for a high school a few years after that. And I think this is, you know, the 9% figure we've gotten to, the way Tony and Hunter have done it, is it's not something we'd like, but I think it's responsible. And I think the fact is, we've got to work with the council, not only this year, but next year and the year after. And, you know, as much as I would like to have 14% increases every single year, it's not going to happen. And optics matters, and as painful as this is, I think this is a responsible budget for the situation we're in. So I'm supporting Mr. Nkuma's motion.
Ms. Webb.
Thank you. As stated by everyone, this is a budget that, I will say again, none of us are very enthused I think optically, as Mr. Lawrence said, it does make a difference in this particular year with so many different pieces on the city side that are moving up. And there are parents and families that are, have already started making the arguments of seeing their tax bills going up, seeing the stormwater fees coming in, and just making it more and more unaffordable for them to stay in the city. It's one thing that I think what we're doing and what Tony and Hunter have done for us is give us really what we can do without necessarily negatively impacting our students. I agree with Michael today, this year, my number is definitely working to make sure that we pay and keep our top teachers. Am I a little uncomfortable with the potential of timing of hiring some of the teachers that we know we're going to ultimately have to use that for? Yes, I am. But if Tony, Lisa, and the crew over there are generally comfortable with this potential calculated, again, it's not that we're just going out there, you know, wildly of doing this. We've, you all have thought about this and would have come back to us and said, "If you really did not think this was something that you all could live with and would not have a negative impact." But I think this year, we, like I say, in the coming years, we're going to be asking the city for a heck of a lot more in the way of Mount Daniel, and ultimately, our ultimate goal is to get the new high school. So I think this year, as painful as this particular one is, I think down the road, we are going to be in a much better position to go and ask for the dollars that we need to do the expansion on Mount Daniel and ultimately go down the road of putting together the plan to bond and get a brand-new high school. And I think we're going to be in a much stronger position by not completely giving the city everything they want, because at the end of the day, they weren't able to come up with a figure that worked, that we always got different numbers almost on a weekly basis. But this is where the bottom line, this is what we are going to propose of the 9%, and this is what we're going to go to bat for. And I have no problems of going to the council to go to bat for this, the budget that we are proposing right now.
My perspective on this is there have been questions, enrollment went up 7.2%? The budget request exceeds that. And why aren't we settling for 7.2? And I think the answer to that is, in fact, we are seeing the effects of the cutbacks. And if we're to close the gap on teacher pay, which I think is laudable, other things are suffering. So really, if you wanted to do 7% plus raising teacher pay, it should be higher. There's a great deal of concern about the cost of education, and I think if you look at other jurisdictions, looking at Fairfax's slides, enrollment is what's driving it. You know, if you look at the cost of what we spend to educate students, Arlington spends almost $2,000 a student per year more than we do, and I think we do at least as good a job as they do. So I think that's a tribute to how efficiently this division is run. I am concerned that we have this view that husbanding our operational expenditures will pay for capital expenditures down the road. I think we've got a lot of demands coming at us on both the operational and capital sides. So I think unfortunately, we are headed, we'll look back at this as an easy budget year, as I've said. Having said that, I do channel the chair a bit here with respect to Tony's budget and what she's asking for here. She would not have asked for if she didn't think we could make this work, knowing what we know now, where we are, doing what we're doing. Will this hold? I guess we'll see. Those matters are out of our control. But at the end of the day, I think where we are, where we're headed, and what the superintendent has said about this budget, that I would go ahead and support the proposal by Mr. Nkuma. So with that, any other thoughts before we close this?
Have we been considering the water fund money there for this budget that Karen brought up? No one's considered that. Is that a viable option for us, those funds?
That's part of the macro. Yeah, we can't say, "Yes, we'd like $2 million of that water fund money."
Well, that's too bad.
I agree.
Well, it seems to me that there's money there that is not accounted for in here. That concerns me a little bit, that we are nickel-and-diming ourselves when there's possibly funds available for the schools. The other thing I want to say is, I understand, you know, tax, we all pay taxes and it's hard, but the reason people move to the city is for the schools. And the reason teachers come to teach in the city is because of the school system. And it's a slippery slope. When we start, you know, cutting things and cutting corners and increasing class sizes, we're losing that quality that people will spend extra money to buy a house in this city as opposed to, you know, right over the border in Arlington because of these schools. To me, it seems in the long run, to not fund this, to fund this budget as best as we can is going to affect not just our students, it's going to affect the homeowners as well. Because if our schools slide, the real estate's going to go down too. And I don't know how many people think about that when they're complaining about tax increases. It's the value of their home as well. Okay, that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Mr. Sharp.
Just a quick point about our projections on our side. We went into last year's budget, and I have a page from the book from last year. We were anticipating an enrollment increase of 4.5%, pardon, 5% for fiscal year 14. It turned out to be 6.1. Now, as Hunter and Tony indicated, we get better, and our projections, I think, are better this year than they were last. We now have a projection of seven, over 7% for next year. And I think that is a more realistic projection for next year. But I'll just say, you know, we went into last year's thinking that 5% was going to be what we were going to get. And we were asking for 14% increase in the budget at that time. Now we anticipate a higher percentage of increase in enrollment, 7% instead of 5%, and we're asking for a substantially lower amount of increase in city transfer. Instead of 14, we're down at 9. And I'd suggest that we're rolling the dice, and I don't think we have to. I think we can set a different number. We've also been asked to, considered by several council members, a more of a long-term discussion with them. For lack of a better term, I'll call it a negotiation period. And I think we could have a much more fruitful negotiation period by starting from either the three or four scenario than if we start from the one that we've been discussing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Any other thoughts?
Yes, I have some. I would like to point out, I'm not a teacher, but I think a lot of the teachers are here because of the night, like Mr. Block was saying earlier this evening, because of the things that are so unique to our school system, like Ms. Ward was saying as well. And once we start, you know, increasing class sizes and doing these other things, making it harder on our teachers to educate our students, and cutting in different areas where they're not going to have specialist time, so that they're going to have, their jobs are going to become harder and harder, I don't think, you know, I do know that teachers appreciate that we're catching, we're trying to make those attempts to catch up on salary, but that's still a four-year plan. And, you know, if they're not, if they're not experiencing any of those intangible things about our school system that drew them here in the first place, and then we compound that with salary differences that are so significant, I think we're going to start losing some of our best teachers. Maybe that's not true, maybe they see it differently, I don't know. But that's sort of where I'm sitting. And I also think that the job of the school board, and I think it's great that we are trying to work so diligently with the city council to make this a process, to send the message to the community that we are working together and we're all in this together and we're trying to pass a budget that will help our community. But the job of the school board is to do the best thing for the schools. And while everyone's going to go ahead and say, "Well, no one's really comfortable with anything we have in front of us," if you're not comfortable with anything you have in front of you, there's no way you're comfortable with 5B2 or 5B1. And I do credit Dr. Jones and, you know, Mr. Kimball and Ms. Hi and everybody sitting across the side of the table for saying that they can make this work. But I don't think as a student, I would be comfortable with some of these class sizes without having access to some of these teachers. And I think it's their job to And I think it's their job to say that they would, but, I mean, I don't know. And I don't wanna put you guys in the position where you have to say that. But we all have a choice here where we could make ourselves feel a little bit more comfortable, where we could do the more responsible thing for our schools. Because right now, looking at a budget scenario around 9%, I don't think that's responsible. I don't think it's not harmful for the students because I really, I think it is putting our school system at a disadvantage in comparison to other districts and it's not helping our students learn at the level that Falls Church has become so accustomed to. So maybe we wanna reevaluate that level and that value system, but I don't think there's anybody in the community who's ready to look at that yet.
Can I actually add one thing? I just wanna add, because I think it's important to say that within this budget, that we are not increasing class size. So I don't want you to think whether it's three, four, or five, that's not the intent to increase class size. We're not taking away specialty time, we are closing the gap on salaries with all three of them. What it is doing is it's that emergency money. So, you know, when the vacuum breaks and, I mean, it's those other ancillary pieces that Mr. Kimball and I will have to really work on, but this budget's very committed to exactly, I think, the task that the school board set out for us to do. And I just, as we talk about, and I agree with everything you're saying, we don't wanna watch class sizes go up. This budget does not increase class sizes. These teacher positions that are sitting on the bottom are sitting there in waiting. But if we need them, we will hire those positions. It's just making it more difficult on the back end for us. We would have no, really, emergency funding.
And when do you think you're going to know the answer to that question? Because...
Kindergarten, actually, high school, and we may know with GM, sooner than later, a lot of our high school students do come in in the summer. We have pre-enrollment numbers, so we get to look at what our pre-enrollment's looking like. So high school usually comes in fairly quickly. Kindergarten, we're hoping, will come in fairly quickly if we get our great pre-enrollment numbers. The most difficult will be third grade and fifth grade because they often enroll right before school starts. So we'll just be watching it very, very closely.
So what's your, so you're looking at your crystal ball by September or October, we could have a need for how many more teachers?
Well, to be honest, once school starts, it's very difficult to add a kindergarten teacher after the doors open. Yeah, yeah, in August, we could. We start, you know, really looking on our pre-enrollment numbers in June and July. So it, again, just depends how quickly kiddos get enrolled. But that third and fifth grade teacher need to be hired before school starts. So in August, we wanna see those numbers coming in.
So that's $400,000 in teacher salaries that are sitting there, hanging over our collective heads.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it...
And they will be gone on September 1st.
Yeah, right.
There's the other intangible that Ms. Hi talked about last week about, you know, we drag this to a certain point and we don't get the quality of teachers that we want. Or we don't even find the teachers that we want because come a certain date, come a certain time, you know, they've made decisions because others were more proactive in going, we need them, we'll hire them, let's make an offer. And we're sitting there, either sort of dragging this budget thing and our hands are tied and can't go after those needed positions by a certain date. So I think that also needs to be a consideration in our deliberation as to, you know, there's a quantitative, but there's also the qualitative that we should think about while we're discussing this and what we go forward and ask for. And not be afraid to defend. I guess, again, for me, it's a, how do you sell this? It's a marketing thing or it's a positioning thing. How do we let council know, this is what we need, we're not, we're fluffing here, we're not being irresponsible, but this is what we need. And I don't know how you cut and dice it, you know, the politics of it may, you may try to work the politics of it on your end by saying, we don't wanna do this, but I'm not sure how many of us sitting around here are going to be affected by the stormwater feed, by the assessments and by all the other stuff. But we're also the same ones asking, we're gonna have to pay. It's a sacrifice we all have to make by committing to live here. Like I said, it may not be as much, but Fairfax County's also raising its taxes. So it's already upping the tax rate to accommodate them. Granted, they've got a bigger tax base, but we have to understand that if we want what we have, 2.2 or in this case, 2.4 square miles, this kind of community where we know each other, where it's small, where we can get our arms around each other, where everybody knows everybody, this is the price we're paying. It's not easy for everybody. It's not easy for me, it's not easy for you, but this is it. So, you know, we're just gonna have to grin and bear it and maybe make sacrifices in other places. But if we want the good schools, if we wanna say, come to Falls Church because we've got small school sizes, we've got great teachers, we've got X, Y, Z, we have world-class teaching, there's a cost to it. It's that simple. And that's what's here. So I say we get on with it.
No, well, no, this is your emotion, right? I just wanna double check and make sure.
They've done reiterating the point, but, you know, take one, vote on it and go to City Hall and say, this is it.
Well, but you raise a good point and that is, the question is, and it's, I think it was observed by Mr. Lawrence, that this budget basically kind of gives us the worst of both worlds in that we have $400,000 in potential hires that are, well, we'll be lucky if it's three and not four, but you probably gotta say we've got two, so we can hire them laid outside the normal hiring process and deplete our contingencies, or we could do something else. So I just wanna, are you having any second thoughts there or you just wanna go into the breach and we'll...
No, no second thoughts. Just emphasizing the fact that, you know, I don't want my colleagues to think, I don't just think we're doing anybody any favors. We need this. You know, to Dave's point, you know, we've cut it back as far as, you know, she doesn't agree with some of us, but to Dave's point, you know, this is what we need, so let's ask for it. I guess that's my entreaty to my colleagues.
But in other words, if we're gonna ask, and then it comes down to the purpose of the contingency, do we wanna ask for those four teachers the way we're doing it in the contingency?
Personally, I think it's hands-off the contingency and that's a Toni and Hunter decision. I don't think we tell Richard LaConde what he does with the 12% or 17% for the general fund. I don't think, I don't think we should be told what to do with the $400,000. Nobody comes from City Hall asking Toni, where did you spend, what did you spend on salt? Or if we have 200 snow days, okay? Or if we get a batch of kids from the State Department in the middle of October, you know, I don't see city council members running through money at us to cover the extra costs of doing that. So I guess my point is, if I was, and I guess I've been in that situation, but if I was the CFO running a business, I'd like a contingency and I hate for my hands to be tied on what to do with that money.
Here, here.
Yeah, Michael, I agree. It's, I think the contingency that we're setting up in the 5B2 is a shell that's gonna be depleted right away and we're really not gonna have contingency. And I would suggest that we need a contingency. You know, we're saying there are no emergencies. Well, why did we move this meeting? Why did we cancel eight or nine days of school this year? There are emergencies that, yeah, they happen, you know, there are direct shows one year and snows another year and hurricanes another year. These are things that we see. There's also 19% growth in the kindergarten. Who could anticipate that?
Anyone else? Any other thoughts?
I just was looking at the difference between scenario three and five. It's less than a quarter million dollars, right?
$246,000.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I wasn't sure if my math was right. And again, and I'm gonna stop apologizing for being new and inexperienced and naive, but for the amount of $250,000, doesn't it seem like we should at least, you know, try for a higher amount for that? It just seems like for that amount of money, what we're agonizing over here, it's not, doesn't seem to be worth it. And I think, you know, to present this to city council with 0.8% more than what is in scenario five, it just seems like, it's not like we're asking for that much more, but it would make such a world of difference in your operations day-to-day to have that. That's, to me, in the grand scheme of things, that is not a lot of money. And I don't think it's gonna make tax rates go crazy and I don't, it's just not enough to do that. So I don't, like, is there a particular reason why, you know, we're really, you know, kinda, like I said, nickel-and-diming this? Do you really think that city council will really frown on that little bit of extra money? Well, I think it's little, you know, my judgment.
It's less than a penny.
Hmm?
It's less than a penny on the tax.
Well, here's a question. Would you support a budget that funded those teachers and zeroed out the contingency?
I don't feel comfortable not having a contingency. I don't. And that's why I keep going back to scenario number three. So we have some contingency. Toni and Hunter would have something to work with in a likely event of an emergency of some sort. But I also wanna see as much funded as possible to keep the schools going the way we want them to go. And that includes, you know, the teacher parity raises as well as, you know, full classrooms and not having, not going over. We wouldn't be doing that in five A or B, but we wouldn't have a contingency either. So I'd like to see, I'd like to see the best of both worlds. So I'm sticking with scenario three. I'm sorry. I'm digging my heels in kids.
Any other thoughts, Mr. Webb?
For me, I completely understand where the other thoughts are coming from. But I kinda come down with Michael. I think at the end of the day, we need to really coalesce behind a number because I am somewhat uncomfortable with, because if, for me, if we were to adjust, I am, because I'm still kinda within that 9.2 potentially and that's the 9.4. But that's where I would at most be willing, if there's anything to talk about. I'm still kinda more comfortable because if Toni Hunter and Hunter are telling us that they can work with the 9%, and they are the ones who are, to on the day-to-day basis, work with this, I have to take their professional judgment on being able to work with that. I understand that some of those other concerns that have been talked about, but I think if we are going forward with that, I think that's, we are gonna work within those numbers and try to make sure that we have that contingency is there to be able to take care of those needs as they come up. But I think ultimately, we, kinda on both sides, we do have a bit of a, somewhat of a responsibility on our side as well to try to work with what's gonna be best for the overall city as a community also. But still, yes, our most important priority is the schools, but still, as a, we are a community. So I think both sides have to work a little bit towards that ultimate goal. And I think trying to be responsible on our side, and our staff is telling us 9%, is literally the most responsible that we can be. I can be comfortable with that. But, you know, tell me if, at the end of the day, if this is not necessarily the case. If you have that ability to tell us, you know, if that's not it, but you've had those opportunities before. So where we've adjusted numbers over the last couple of weeks here quite a bit. So I just, the 9% is the number that we've come to and it seems like on your all side, that's the line and the sand that you all have drawn that this is it. We can't comfortably go anywhere below this. So on your all side too, it's the, we've asked you to look at, in many ways it's possible, to try to lower the request and now you all have hit the wall of saying, this is it too. So if that's the case, you know, I'm comfortable to work, to make every effort to work with that and go to city council to bat for this budget because we are still asking for way more than they in multiple numbers have come to us to tell us to fast forward. So we are still asking for 4% to 5% more than what they have consistently come back in the, anywhere from 5% to 5.8%. So we are still asking for way more than they are telling us that they, that we need to get here to keep a flat tax rate. None of us are comfortable in going there and none of us, you know, we are getting as close to being comfortable as we can with this, but we all know we do not want to ultimately affect the quality of what's going in the classroom and definitely, we wanna make, to catch up with the teachers. I think the teachers who have been here a long time generally know they aren't used to the schools being very different from where they are now and the growth continues to happen. It's more, I think it's more of the younger teachers who are here are, to some degree, I think they like some of the benefits that we provide to them of the smaller class sizes. But I think those younger families are quicker to look more at the bottom line of what the salaries are. So us making that plan, trying to make that catch-up for them and to keep them here long-term so they're not looking at Arlington, they're not looking at Alexandria and places like that, I think we are at least making that conscious effort. And I'm 100% on board with making that effort to keep those potential young, energetic faculty members here for the long haul and that's where the salary piece comes in, to continue to make it attractive for them to stay here opposed to year, two years, we've invested in them, they've gotten some type of educational benefits from us or some kind of piece there that then they, after two years, then they're gone to the other piece because at the end of the day, they're looking at, how much money am I making, how much money am I making to take care of my family? Falls Church isn't keeping up with that. Yeah, I like the small, but I can, I'm willing to suck it up and go here for the potential Fairfax County that may have knocking at the 30 kids in the class because I'm gonna make $10,000 more to have that additional salary to take care of my family.
Toni, could I ask you a question? So if these four teachers come, the contingency cupboard will be bare.
Yes.
So what do we do then?
Well, that happened to us the year before last and because we had to hire when school starts. And, you know, you don't really know at the beginning of the school year. You may have a few cost savings that come when a teacher, you know, moves overseas in the summer or wasn't expecting to move. We hire a first-tier teacher, you have a little bit there. But, I mean, it's looking inside. But, I mean, it's, it's looking inside your existing budget and making difficult decisions. I, I mean, and that's, that's what we, that's what we do. But, I mean, you know, unfortunately, in the nature of schools, that's why we line item. And I think that's why you see so much detail in the budget we bring you, where we're really telling you every little penny is spent, because we have to know that, down to precision, because we get ready to be at the point where we have to make a very difficult decision about what you fund and what you don't. We have to know how to make that best choice and sometimes make it quickly. And, and, you know, last year it was sewage and some, some, you know, issues that happened that were unforeseen. And so then, if you don't have that amount of money in your maintenance account, then you have to be able to look, well, where, where do you have within your budget to have some costs in our shifts to be able to pay for those items that were 50 or 60,000 that you didn't see getting ready to happen?
Mr. Sharp?
I think the scenario five is skating on thin ice at a time when it's too cold for thin ice.
Warm?
Too cold.
Okay.
The ice is, the ice is thicker right now. And I'll just, I'll just go back to Lawrence and I met with a couple of the council members. And, and their, their scenario of how this would play out was not, "Cut your budget right now down to five percent, and that's all you're going to get." Their scenario was lengthen the process of talking to us. We can, we can foresee right now that you would clearly get five and a half percent, but there's other things that are coming down the pipe that you're, if, if, if you're content to work with us in, in a kind of negotiation period, then you can be pretty, pretty much assured that you're going to get more than that five and a half. And so, it was the water fund money, it was the surplus that's likely to happen. All of those things that, on their side, are a different kind of contingency. But they've, they've consistently shown up in the past. And I think they were telling us, and I think Dan Zee was particularly forthcoming in that, in saying that, that while the, the spreadsheet that Richard would, would pass out would show five and a half or, you know, somewhere around there, Dan was, was pretty free, that he thought eight and a half was more like the target. And then, if we, if we came in with that, we'd still have room to, to discuss how additions could be made from there. So, I think, I think the ice is, is pretty thick right now. And I, I think we can get to a point where, where we're both happy on our side and their side by setting a higher number for our request, but then working with them on how to, how to get to the realistic number by the time we get to the end of April, when there's no ice.
We hope. Mr. Webb?
And he's right with Dan Zee, eight and a half percent. But what I guess I'm somewhat uncomfortable with, and I don't see of being on that side before, this council being comfortable in if we shoot over a higher number, but we're in the midst of negotiations, of us, of them then lowering on their side or to bring the number down, because there's not been a willingness. There's, generally, the conversation happens throughout the budget cycle of the threat potentially of reducing what the schools have asked for, but that never happens. So, kind of, within what Karen's talking about of an ongoing negotiation of, "Well, we'll reduce it down to this, but a little bit later in the process, there potentially are additional funds there that we can then up it above what you initially asked for." I'm not sure what the willingness of the council to do that and how that would work. And then, I, we have not been able to, for now, three years or more, have been able to even come to any kind of agreement on trying to work on a revenue-sharing agreement. So, I'm a little skeptical on, on, on the potential of that. Guess there's, I think there's new, there's more, the potential of more goodwill on the side of council, but I'm still not 100% sure of where we are with that. Yes.
Any other thoughts?
I guess it passes in prediction of the future, but last year, we know there's several council members who were adamant about holding the tax rate at, what was it, $1.27?
Yes, yes.
And were ultimately, I don't know, cajoled or convinced to move up to $1.30.5 eventually, whether they're kicking, they're drought-kicking and screaming, or when they came to realize over the time what that meant, this is what happened and that happened. I'm not saying that will happen this time, but again, unless we make our case, we're not going to get, if you don't ask for it, you won't get it. So, I say we go out and we ask for it, and then be prepared to defend it. And I think by, by, by cutting it, as far as I'm concerned, to the bone, it's a lot easier for me to defend for anybody who comes up and says, "It's less than, it's much less than what we got, we asked for last year. It's even less than what the superintendent asked for this year." And so, if you can convince me or show me where else to cut, maybe we have a discussion. But until you put a ring around the city and stop the kids from coming in, I don't know how else we do this.
I have mind voting, so I can get a headline in my paper.
We can text it to you later.
For the state.
What's it, what's it going to say, Nick? What's it going to say? Just print "School Board Passes Budget," and you'll be good to go. I promise.
That's right. I'll take that educated guess.
Do you need us for a headline?
Now, he just makes them up.
All right. One, one last thought, and that is, sometimes I have strong views that I hold weekly. Sometimes I have other views that I, I hold weekly. I, I think I'm concerned, and as a matter of being good stewards of the school system, you, you can't plan, plan to fly across the country and land with a gallon of gas left in the tank, because God knows what kind of weather you're going to run to in between. And it seems to me, that's how I generally plan my trips, by the way. And when I'm right, it's great, and when I'm wrong, you know, we're walking to get gas to the nearest gas station. I'm concerned that we have built, you know, there's one thing to say we have no fat, but if we have no contingency at all, if we have no, if we are in the beginning of school with nothing, that concerns me. And it concerns me because I honestly don't know how big of a gap there's going to be. We could be in serious trouble, and having said to the council, "This is what we need," I think we hold ourselves to that. And so, I suppose when you get elected to something, eventually this happens, you are termed a flip-flop. But I, I don't think this is good stewardship. I don't think this is the way, I, if we can't find a legitimate contingency in the face of demographic trends that are going to throw these students to generate the need for these teachers before the school year, I don't think we're being, we're serving the schools, the children, or ultimately the city, right? Because we're not making our needs known well enough. So, with that, we can call for a vote, unless somebody else has anything else they want to say. And then perhaps we will take a short break. How about quick? Mr. Webb?
So, Mr. Castillo, does that mean then you are in transition on your initial position?
I think we need a legitimate contingency. And I don't think we have a legitimate contingency. I think, as Mr. Lawrence pointed out, the contingency here is, is not a contingency as we normally know it. It is a pre-spent contingency, a pre-appropriated, dedicated contingency.
I would then dare say, with that being said, of what it sounds to me, we're on our way down to a
Time.
Three-three. So, I think we may as well go ahead and begin a conversation about what's next that can pass.
Or somebody could have proposed an amendment or something.
Is it three-three?
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Oh.
Yeah, motion fails. So, that's why, that's why when he said what he said.
Did we vote on my motion?
No, but that's what I'm saying. Right now, your motion would go, your motion would go three-three right now. So, that's why I'm, that's why I asked.
Kind of where it's headed.
I asked a question just now.
Okay. Okay, but then what is a legitimate contingency?
So, can we go through the
Yeah, I was just going to say, what's?
I was going to say, do we go through the
We can withdraw.
We don't, I mean, you don't have to do anything under Robert's rules. We can, we can, no, we could amend, we could amend, we could do all kinds of things.
We can withdraw.
You could make a front.
I, I think, I mean, let's, let's.
Well, yes, my next question, or if we're going to take a break, and I'll give them opportunity. If we are going to, being that the $400,000 is, is technically accounted for right now, what potential of additional, on top of that, would members be comfortable with to have in a contingency?
Okay, hold on. That question is directed at?
The
Tony?
Staff, yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
I think another way of asking that question would be, what was the original contingency in your budget?
Yeah, 250.
250.
But it was hiring all the staff, right?
Ms. Rankuma?
I think we're in the hole 2.2 million. We were 2.6 in unfunded needs that you didn't even put on the budget. So, if you put a $400,000 contingency without 2.2 million, I'd say a contingency of some sort is better than nothing. That's what I'm, you know, that's how I would, that's how I read this. And so, so, yes, the contingency may not be as much as we want it to be, but it's better than the alternative.
Well, I think where we're going here is probably putting teachers back in and having a contingency. So, it's not working with the same number. It's increasing the number and probably lowering the contingency from 400.
Again, I come back to, pardon my French, but who cares? City, we're asking them for a lump sum of money. How we spend it is our business, right? What do they care whether we do teachers, we do salt, we buy buses? You know, I, I'm trying to understand that piece.
Well, that's, that's, that's true, but I think the, the issue is that, well, if you look at the totality of our budget, there is, there is nothing, there is no contingency as such. I agree there should be a contingency, but I think that the problem is, is that this isn't a contingency that says we should fund our reasonably anticipated needs plus a little extra. This is basically saying, "We need four teachers, we have trouble budgeting for them, so we'll, we'll put a contingency out there that can cover the teachers that are going to come, zeroing out our contingency." So, that's my concern.
So, just, yeah, advocating that we add to the contingency?
I, I would say that we have a contingency that realistically reflects the forthcoming needs for those teachers.
So, in terms of numbers, we double what we put in here?
Yeah, I mean, what's
That'd be an increase.
What's the
Over and above is the question.
Well, I, I mean, I, I, I'm waiting for, for some, some number. Dr. Jones was saying the original contingency was 250,000.
Right. The original contingency was 250,000. And, you know, as I listen to you, it's either three, four, or five, it sounds like where you are. It almost sounds like three of you are on three, and three of you are on five, and maybe we need to consider four. And I don't know whether that gets people more in their comfort zone or not, but
Hold on one second. Mr. Sharp was waiting, and then you go, Mr. Webb.
I, I agree that we're passing just a single number tonight and not necessarily specifying what's underneath the number. However, we, we now have to go into a period of
Okay, well, hold on. One, one conversation at a time here, please. As, as we pass this, this budget, we have to go into a period of then explaining the budget to the community and to the council. And so, we will have to tell them pretty specifically what we're, what we're talking about, what positions we're planning to fill, what our contingency number is. And we can't just tell them, "Oh, we want 30," I'm sorry, we, we, our total budget is 44 million and change, and we're not going to tell you what's underneath it. So, yeah. This is our sort of secret playbook right now. This running stock is here, and so our secret playbook tells us that we don't have a contingency worthy of the name.
Oh, I, I agree.
And I, and, and so now the question is, what would it look like if we funded those positions that are pre-allocated for the contingency and then had a legitimate contingency that would, it really cushioned against the unanticipated?
That's scenario three. Scenario three. Scenario three has the positions in, and it has a $250,000 contingency.
So, Mr. Webb, did you get your, okay, any other thoughts?
And I just, just so that clarifies four, because I just making sure everybody knows, in four, you're actually looking at, you have those two positions that are sit and wait instead of having all four. And your contingency is a little higher, though, than it is in three. So
It's at 350.
It's at 350. So, if you came back and hired the kindergarten teacher para and also the court teacher, you still would have 131,000 in contingency, but just so that you haven't overlooked that.
Tony, why don't we see the word, the, the, why don't we see the contingency in the same line? Am I missing something in three?
The, the reason being is that in the superintendent's, in the superintendent's original proposed budget, there's a $250,000 contingency. And so, it's assumed to be there. And as, as we did scenarios, we started backing things out. And so, the contingency item only changes from scenario four onward.
Oh, okay, because it's the only one that's
So, you can do what I did and write, and write 250 on the page. Very good.
So, with that, we could call for a vote, we could amend the motion, we can do all kinds of things. Does anybody want to make a motion of conscience?
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
Well, okay, we're going to amend the vote.
I'll amend the motion to, so that the total budget requested is 44,813,500. And that the requested city transfer is 36,962,200. That's the numbers in scenario
Actually, this, this is
You did this one first, yeah.
Those are the numbers in, sorry.
In scenario three.
Okay, these are the correct numbers.
And
Right.
I'll just say that the scenario three is, is 250,000 above scenario five. But it's also 250,000 below what Tony originally requested. So, there is, there is, in a sense, a compromise here of what, you know, what Tony initially started out with and where we would make a request to the council. I think, I think it's a responsible place to be.
There is a motion on the floor.
All right. I, I think the cleanest way to deal with this is just to vote on this motion, because I don't think it's amenable to, well, you moved to amend. There's something, second, we can certainly go that direction.
Second.
Great.
Well, first, I mean, it's, the first question is whether Michael would accept it as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
The sacred unity. I'll, I'll accept it as a friendly amendment. I don't agree with it, but I'll accept it as a friendly amendment, so we can vote on it.
And, and just, just one point, point of clarification. Marty had distributed this evening sheets for scenario three and scenario four. They differ slightly They differ slightly, the numbers, the items do not change at all. They differ slightly because I've plugged in some changes in state revenue that have the most recent information. So in terms of naming numbers, the, the new, the new sheets would have, have the correct total budget and city transfer there.
Are they in this behind this? Give me
Okay, so the total operating now would be 44,834,600.
Yeah, it's not much of a change, but he suggested the state numbers.
So the city transfer is staying the same?
Yeah.
Yes.
The, the overall total budget would be 44,834,600. And the request for city transfer, 36,962,200. 962 and 200.
Thank you.
And Michael has accepted the
Well, I, I'm just checking here. It, it sounds as if, under Robert's rules, the, the friendly emotion, we, for, out of abundance of caution, we shouldn't go with a friendly, a friendly amendment is fine, but it must be adopted by the full body or by a vote or by unanimous consent. So out of an abundance of caution, let me not screw this up.
Good job.
My substitute motion.
We just wrote on the
You can just ask if there's any objection and if there's not
Okay, we have an objection on this, though.
Unanimous consent.
So we have unanimous consent for the amendment. So with that, Mr. Kimball, would you call the roll, please?
Very good. Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries, it's unanimous.
Stop the presses.
Three?
We're still on
Three.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Well, Nick, aren't you gonna wait for the food service budget?
Yeah, I don't think that, aren't you gonna wait for the food?
This was, this was the, well, this missed the vote, that's what I was just clarifying. It was for scenario three?
Yes.
Yes. I think it just caught us off guard because they all agreed.
The next item of business is approval of submission to the city manager of the fiscal year 15 food service budget. Do you have any motions?
Can he borrow yours?
Oh, yeah, oh, yes, absolutely. Take, go, yes, take.
Okay.
May I need a survey of a sheet?
Somebody needs to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve for submission to the city manager the proposed 2014, 2015 food services budget with receipts and disbursements in the amount of $956,000, $956,400.
Second.
Any questions, debate, discussion? All right, Mr. Kimball, take the roll, please.
We're out of sleep tonight.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, yes. Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you.
Next, we have approval of submission to the city manager of the fiscal year 15 community services budget.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board approve for submission to the city manager the proposed 2014, 2015 community services fund budget in the amount of $1,769,800, requiring a total city appropriation of $113,330.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Good. Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous, pass.
I appreciate everybody's civility and hard work tonight. This was not pleasant and, and I don't think that it was the most elegant exercise, but I think we did all right. So thank you.